Okay, good afternoon. Joint Committees on Health and Human Services and Transportation and Culture in the Arts for one bill. It's Friday, March 24th, 1:00 PM, Conference Room 225. Okay, we just have one resolution. Okay, first, we have Department of Health. Okay, support. U.S. Rental Care.
Aloha, my name is Melissa Pavlasek. I'm here on behalf of U.S. Rental Care today. I also submitted some individual personal testimony. We're in strong support of this measure. Thank you Senator Aquino for introducing it and to the committees for hearing it today. Yesterday, we heard the powerful personal story of Representative Mark Nakashima, who recently received a kidney transplant. It was incredibly important to save his life, and we just think raising awareness is very important. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have the Healthcare Association of Hawaii.
President of the Association of Hawaii, strong support of SCR 28.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, National Kidney Foundation of Hawaii.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair Lee. So, I'm Glenn Hayashida, National Kidney Foundation of Hawaii. I just want to say a few words in addition to the testimony I submitted. First of all, we have the two providers of dialysis in this room today, and we are very fortunate as a state that there are resources that we have dialysis. But we cannot, we cannot sit back and just depend on that. I can tell you that today, the challenges of building dialysis centers is greater than ever before, and we just cannot, just, the solution to taking care of these dialysis or kidney patients cannot be building more dialysis centers. Today, when you drive around town, you can't help but see a dialysis center. But it really points to the fact that, you know, we have close to 5,000 people on dialysis. We have over 100,000, more than 100,000 in the state that have at some stage of kidney disease, which really points to the solution of early detection and prevention. So we just ask for your support for this resolution and also any efforts to promote and support early detection and prevention. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I did forget to say earlier, just following the Chair's rules in previous hearings, and basically, there's a one-minute time limit, okay? Thank you very much. Okay, but thank you. Okay, up next, we have Kaiser Permanente. And support. Okay, we have Jocelyn Sakamago.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Matsunaga. I'm here for Jocelyn Sakamago, Liberty Dialysis Hawaii. We stand in strongest support of this resolution. We thank all of you who signed on to sponsor this resolution. We're very troubled by the high rate of chronic disease amongst Hawaii's youth that will lead to kidney disease. We really, really appreciate all of the work of Glenn Hayashida and the National Kidney Foundation of Hawaii. On a personal note, I'd like to share that my grandpa had kidney disease. My dad suffered from end-stage renal disease. So I know very personally all of the benefits of kidney awareness and of the kidney foundation. I'd also like to encourage everybody, I think Glenn mentioned it, tomorrow is the Kidney Walk. Go to KidneyWalk.org/hawaii and you can sign up. It's at Kapilani Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have Queens Health System. Thank you very much. Hawaii Medical Association. Also in support. Any others wishing to testify? SCR 28. And again, designated the month of March as White Kidney Awareness Month. Okay, Sinan. We'll need to recess real briefly. Recession. Okay, we convening our joint committee with the Health and Human Services as well as the Committee on Transportation and Culture in the Arts. Okay, we just have one resolution, SCR 28, together. So after a very short deliberation, we're gonna go ahead and move this out as is. Any questions? Members, Sinan?
Chair's recommendation is to pass. So the Chair votes, oh, Chair Sanbuen Matura is excused. Vice Chair Aquino.
Aye.
Moriwaki.
Aye.
Shimabukuro, excused. And Senator Awa.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Thank you, TCA Committee, same recommendation. Chair votes, aye. Vice Chair excused. Senator Elafante, aye. Senator Kehon Gobole, aye. And Senator Awa.
Aye.
Recommendation adopted. Okay, thank you very much. We're adjourned. Okay, welcome to our Health and Human Services Committee. Do have a 102 agenda in Conference Room 225 for a number of resolutions, both SCRs and SRs. I did forget to read the script earlier, so I was told that I need to go ahead and read this script for everyone here. Okay, so, I'd like to thanks all my colleagues, some of the members who are here. We have Senator Moriwaki, as well as Senator Awa. Okay, this is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to end this due to technical difficulties, the Committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Wednesday, March 29th, at 1:20 PM in Room 225 via video conference. Okay, one minute, one minute only. Okay, you will see it on the screen. Okay, we appreciate your understanding. Thank you very much. All right. Okay, up first. SCR 112, SCR 118. This is requesting the Hawaii State Center for Nursing to convene a working group to study the feasibility and impact of the state adopting the Nurse Licenseure Compact. Okay, up first, we have the Board of Nursing. Okay, thank you very much. Healthcare Association of Hawaii.
President of the Healthcare Association of Hawaii. Thank you for the opportunity. We're happy to be a part of this, a member of this working group, and we are supportive of this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, up next, we have H. Messier. Okay, thank you very much. We have Queens, Queens Health System.
Vice Chair, we stand in strong support of the resolution. Appreciate you hearing this.
Okay, thank you very much. We have the Hawaii State Center for Nursing. In support. Kupuna Caucus of Hawaii, sorry, the Democratic Party of Hawaii. Martha Randolph. In support. Okay, Hawaii Pacific Health. In support. National Institute of Hawaii. Okay, with comments. Okay, I believe that's all the written testimony we have. Any others wishing to testify? SCR 112, SR 118. Okay, Sinan, members, any questions? Okay, Sinan, let's move on to the next set of resolutions. SCR 67, SR 60. This is requesting the Governor's Coordinator on Homelessness to conduct a study on the cost of programs and services necessary to end chronic homelessness by 2030. Okay, up first, we have James Koschiba. Okay, thank you very much. Catholic Charities, Hawaii.
I'm Mary Larsen, Representative Catholic Charities Hawaii. Will we ever test them in the common courts?
Okay, thank you very much. Corey Rosoney. Okay, in support. I believe that's all the written testimony we have. Any others wishing to testify? SCR 67, SR 60. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES. This is for the Governor's Coordinator on Homelessness.
Yes.
Okay, we're just gonna testify to say that I think the intention is good to study the homeless, the homeless concern. And if it is a burden though, perhaps it can be legislated for other agencies to assist, such as the city. The city has worked closely through their Department of Emergency Services, with the ambulance, HFD, HPD, and also CORE, Crisis Outreach Response Engagement, with the homeless. So they already have a well-established, you know, working relationship with the homeless. So if it is a burden, then perhaps it can be considered by the legislature to legislate it so that it can be a shared burden to the city.
Your time is up. Could you please wrap it up?
Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any others wishing to testify? SCR 67, SR 60. Sinan, members, any questions? Senator Moriwaki.
Mr. Koschiba? The resolution would like information on the cost of programs and services and how we end homelessness. Your testimony seems to indicate you've got a number of initiatives going, and there are a number of, like, big, complex initiatives. I'm just wondering, how much of this resolution can you do in terms of giving us some cost estimates? And can we amend this resolution so that you can provide some indication of where we are at the end of the year? So we know that we are making progress, whether the costs. We have a lot of money we're putting into homeless programs. So I think we need some kind of, we have metrics, accountability of where we are.
Yeah, and I'm happy to produce those things for the legislature. My suggestion was just to take a different approach to producing that information and providing it. So in implementing the strategies that I laid out in the testimony, I mentioned that there's several pieces, several pieces of data that I'll be gathering along the way, including costs related to permanent supportive housing, call hale, the continuum of care that runs from street outreach to sustained housing placements, as well as mental and behavioral health services and space for folks that have mental and behavioral health needs who are on the street. So for those components, I'm confident that I can provide cost data and outcomes measures for the legislature.
Is comprehensive enough to cover everything? I think when we're looking at that second year resolve that talks about shelter space, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, housing assistance, stabilization facility, substance abuse, healthcare, no, no. Outreach and social services, is that within the purview of what you are doing?
It isn't.
Is that, is that okay with you putting it, squeezing it into your comprehensive plan? Or do you want some language amended here? But we basically are looking at what's the cost of the programs and the services provided, so.
Yeah, so it is covered. I categorize it a little bit differently.
But it's the same, you can provide this.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
I have a quick question. Thank you for being here. So when can we expect a report regarding some of the things that you're already doing?
Oh, I mean, there's, there's not too much that's underway yet. I mean, but I can certainly report back to the legislature before the start of next session.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, members, any other questions? Okay, Sinan, let's move on. Thank you. SCR 69, SR 62. Requesting the Department of Health to establish a Beneficial Treatments Advisory Council to review, evaluate, and recommend new medicinal, mental health treatments. Okay, first, we have the Office of Wellness and Resilience. Okay, thank you very much. Department of Health.
Happy to be on the floor today, Vice Chair. Members of the Committee, Lauren Kim, Policy Planning Officer for the Department. We submitted comments, and I'd just like to highlight a couple of points. DOH is continuing to struggle with the relevance of DOH to this working group. We do, we do not regulate the practice of medicine or the scope of pharmacists, and I, we just do not see a role for DOH in this. I can, you know, we are supporting a bill that establishes within DOH a Temporary Beneficial Treatments Advisory Council for future breakthrough therapy designations. But for two substances that are about half a year away from FDA approval, we're struggling to see what value DOH can bring. That being said, I can already predict one of the major findings of this report that this working group would produce, which is to deschedule these substances for licensed prescribers in Hawaii. Doing so would be much more meaningful action than a working group. If you deschedule it, many of the local experts, the psychiatrists and psychiatric APRNs that are currently unable to more openly discuss their experiences will be able to do so, and the market will respond. So we're just offering comments and struggling to see the relevance of DOH to something that takes care of the private healthcare system. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have Michael Cohen. Okay, support. We have the Hawaii Psychological Association. In support. Doreen Shin.
Aloha, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Standing on my written testimony in support. And, you know, we, your committee also heard HB 1340 recently, and we just want to turn your attention to that in case there is similar amendments you want to make to this resolution, similar to what Department of Health highlighted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have Robin Martin. Amanda, excuse me, Amanda Lidderbridge. And numerous testifiers in support. Okay, we also have comments from Keith Payne. Big testimony support from Aaron Etterding, as well as Dr. Blaine Williams. Are they here? Sorry, I believe Robin Martin is on Zoom. Robin, are you there?
He's in the meeting. I asked her to start her video, but no response yet.
Okay. Well, just, we'll just note that we received her testimony in support. Okay, any others wishing to testify? SCR 69, SR 62. Okay, Sinan, members, any questions?
I do. Department of Health, please. Lauren.
Matsunaga.
Hi, good afternoon. If not Department of Health leading the assessment, who else?
And that's where I'm struggling to see where state government fits in this equation at all. Once the FDA approves it, the feds prove it. Chapter 329 will have to be amended so that locally, it is not a Schedule I. Nominally, that would be Department of Law Enforcement. But if the advocates are getting at, how do we prepare clinicians for this? I just don't see a role. A DCCA doesn't seem to fit the bill. They regulate the, you know, physicians, the fitness state. America has a self-regulating medical model, where the Board of Medical Examiners regulates the profession. But it doesn't really establish community standards of practice or encourages certain specific therapies to be adopted. So that usually comes from the private sector. That's why we're really struggling with, where does DOH fit in this conversation? It's not something we've ever been a part of in the past when a new drug therapy or a new medical technology comes out. Certainly, the Director of Health for liability reasons is not going to say everybody, you know, use, consider psilocybin. So it's, it's, I don't have a clear answer for you.
There's a health component to it, and there's a regulatory component to it. So, so I guess, if, when we're looking at, is it safe for us? Is it safe for the public? That's the department, why I see the Department of Health having a role. So how might the department at least oversee what's happening? Because you're saying it's done by the private sector, but, you know, we've got regulations on other kinds of drugs. And where does that, where does Department of Health, you can say we'll wait for the feds, but, you know, in terms of public's health?
Sure, for, so we do have a food and drug branch. So there is Chapter 328 HRS, which is the Food, Drug, and Cosmetics Act. And that's a local version of the, basically, the Food and Drug Administration's federal responsibilities. That does not get at how medicines approved by the FDA are used. It gets into more, are they being stored safely? Are they being handled properly? Are they labeled properly? Is there fidelity to what the manufacturer has done? So in terms of product safety, the department has a role for any product approved by the FDA, all the way from dietary supplements on up to cancer medications. But in terms of, how do we get this out into the community? How do we get psychiatrists and physicians and psychiatric APRNs ready for this? That has always been the role of the private sector, because the community, community standards of practice come from the community, not from the department. And so, again, we're really struggling to see our value in this, yeah, outside of product safety.
So, so when I see this advisory council composition, it's the Wellness Director, it's the AG, it's the State Council of Mental Health, it's a physician, it's you folks, of course, and representative organizations that represent these psychedelic modalities. So it seems like it's a, it's a group that could look at the various kinds of psychedelics or modalities and at least come up with some protocol or something to do, whatever new drugs come on the market. Would that be helpful, at least in terms of discussion of what might be the protocol?
And that's tough, because now we're talking about actual research. I mean, you know, are we going to have cohorts of people where we, one group gets placebo and one gets the other? And that, again, that usually, that's happening right now with the breakthrough therapy designation. The manufacturers of these products are running these, you know, double-blind evidence level 1A studies. And if it's about gathering the relevant studies and abstracting them to some recommendation, we can go through the motions, but really, it's really going to come from actual practice. You know, there are certainly things in Hawaii that are way different from the continent. You know, our ethnic mix, and do Asians react differently to this or that or the other thing? But that's, again, that's primary research that probably has to happen in an academic setting. That's not what DOH does.
I don't think, I don't, I'm reading this, Rizzo. And I don't think it's saying for you to do the research. It's saying what kinds of research, when we have these drugs. So wouldn't that be helpful for this kind of lively group of people to come together and say, hey, maybe this is what we should be asking whenever any new drug comes?
We do see value in that. So the bill that I referred to, that we support, that we wrote the amendments for, to say whenever there is a breakthrough therapy designation for a mental health or substance abuse drug, we should come together and talk story and get ourselves ready. But in this case, what's unique about this is that these drugs are scheduled. They're Schedule I. It's illegal to possess them, period. Highly addictive, potential for harm. And that's what's unique, and that's why my recommendation is just deschedule it. That will accelerate the community conversation, because it will be in people's hands. People will see the cause and effects of them, and that will propel this discussion further than a working group studying, you know, related research.
It seems that the working group is not to research that schedule or not schedule, but it's to say, what shall we do when a new drug comes out? And is there a benefit to doing that?
And that's a very valid point. But again, these drugs are about 16 months away from FDA approval, so it's going to happen anyway. And again, that's why we're saying, you know, going forward, so breakthrough therapy designation, it usually takes about four to six years from that designation to eventual FDA approval. And, you know, a lot can happen in between, it can be withdrawn, all that sort of stuff. So it makes more, so we agree that we should have those conversations. But for one, that's less, for about a year away that we know it's going to happen, and that's scheduled, and that's what's very different from the other breakthrough therapy designations that, the other ones that we're aware of, the several hundred, is genuinely new technology, not something thought of as highly addictive with no medicinal value, you know, when the controlled substance is active or inactive.
So what is the bill you're saying does this? Or is this something different than what the bill, the breakthrough bill you're talking about?
Well, you know, there are.
I'm just seeing that, you know, that it looks like a good group of people to be analyzing what the.
Well, in this case, law enforcement's not on this. And I can't, I cannot speak to their capacity or willingness. I don't, they are?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misread that.
That's why I said, you know, it's a wellness, AG, well, not law enforcement, law enforcement, but AG, bringing the regulatory framework.
Okay, I was more thinking narcotics enforcement, but I can't speak on their willingness or capacity to serve all this. So again, you know, we didn't oppose it. We're just really struggling to see what value this will bring when we know that market forces will eventually push this discussion. And again, once it's descheduled and it gets in people's hands, real life will take over, and then we will, our community will see more quickly the benefits of this. So again, we're not opposing, but we're just questioning what we can do.
If this were passed, would you take a swipe at it? At least to say, what should we be doing?
It is the policy and practice of the executive branch to respond to concurrent resolutions.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any other questions? SCR 69, SR 62. Okay, I'd just like to clarify, that Clarity Project, Ashley Lukin, we received their testimony and support. Okay. Okay. All right, let's move on to SCR 88, SR 79. Okay, requesting the Office of Wellness and Resilience to establish the Malama O'Kano Working Group. Up first, we have Office of Wellness and Resilience. Okay, thank you very much. We have Laurie Tochiki. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Hawaii Youth Services Network, Judith Thark. In support. Puah Foundation. Members, we also have three individuals sending in testimony and support. Any others wishing to testify? SCR 88, SR 79. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any others wishing to testify? Okay, SCR 88, SR 79. Sinan, members, any questions? Okay, Sinan, let's move on to the next pair of resolutions. So excuse me, the next concurrent resolution. SCR 119. This request the Department of Health to do all kinds of things.
Whatever we ask.
Okay, relating to applied behavioral analysis for adults and all related items. Okay, first, Department of Health. Okay, thank you very much. We have DHS. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have the Hawaii Association for Behavior Analysis. Okay, support.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Members of the Committee, Kristen Popper, on behalf of the Hawaii Association for Behavior Analysis. We'll stand on our written testimony, just adding, we have provided a variety of links to existing research model coverage policy that does include adults, as well as New Mexico's policies, rules, and accepted state plan amendment within our testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have the Hawaii Disability Rights Center. Okay, in support. The Council of Autism Service Providers. Okay, also in support, Linda Elentl, on Zoom. Uh, could you unmute yourself, please? Uh, could you unmute yourself, please? Linda?
You probably couldn't hear me, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. I'm Linda Elento, and I'm a parent, I happen to be in Texas right now, so I'm happy soon this is an option here. Uh, because I only have a minute, I want to ask you, encourage you to please look at our similar, um, testimony I provided for S B one four seven three, as well as last year's Senate Resolution that passed number one one four. Basically identical to this one. Um, I am a parent of a child, he turns twenty-two. And I've experienced a lot of issues and I wish I had a chance to explain the purpose of this. And basically, I, you know, I hear the snickering about all this that needs to be done. Um, this is what we're asking. An individual who turns twenty-two would be able to continue their Medicaid service for A V A as long as they, they need it. Um, believe me, every few months, the A V A people, service people have to reevaluate and determine if it's even the, if they met goals. So, and that's it. And that's all we're asking for. Otherwise, the waiver issues that have been brought up in testimony, it doesn't work. My kid has still yet to even assess that, and it's not the same, it is not A V A. Last year's testimony from one of the agencies says it's A V A per se, or it's not really A V A. So you can't compare it, even in the school system, you can't compare it. I, I know my edit probably up if it is cutting off. But um, I'm gonna, I guess I will end at that and hope that you will be able to take the time to read and repeat uh the necessity of this and the durability of this. And uh, basically, it's, it.
Sorry, Linda, um, your, your, your minute is up.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, members, we do have at least twelve to fifteen individuals sending in written testimony, all in support. Okay, any others wish you to testify? S C R one nineteen. Okay, sing non-members, questions? Let's move on. S C R one thirty-two, S R one fifty-two. Okay, this is requesting the H S Med Quest Division to take steps necessary to ensure that adequate provider rates are established for applied behavior analysis services. Okay, up first, we have D H S. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, again, we have the Hawaii Association for Behavior Analysis.
Thank you, Vice Chair and members of the committee, Kristen Kova-Bird, on behalf of the Hawaii Association for Behavior Analysis. Will stand on our written testimony, uh, really highlighting that our focus is on the registered behavior technicians, so one particular code where we see a pretty big difference. You'll see that highlighted in our testimony as well as the Council of Autism Service Providers for Medicaid fee schedules in other states as well as payers such as the Department of Education, TRICARE, and Department of Health within the state. So really looking for any assistance with rate increases on that particular level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have the Hawaii Disability Rights Center. Can support. Uh, Jocelyn Miller. Okay, and support. Okay, we have Jason Stoffer on Zoom.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me? Actually, yeah. So, thank you, Chair and members of the committee for the time today. So I am a direct services provider and supervisor of Applied Behavior Analysis Services. And I would like to just reiterate my written testimony and also echo the words of the Hawaii Association for Behavior Analysis. And also stress that I do face on a near daily basis the challenges fa- the challenges faced by families supporting children with autism spectrum disorders and how those problems can be exacerbated by the lack of direct services providers, um, which is a problem directly related to reimbursement rates. So I strongly feel that taking a look at these reimbursement rates, bringing them in line with market rates, could really help alleviate these gaps in services and provide these families these much-needed supports. So thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have Christine Molten. In support, Elisa Lipp, Erin Walters, Carla Schmidt, all in support. Okay, Leslie Allison Shirts with comments. Okay, and a whole list about, uh, about twelve to fifteen, again. Uh, individual testifiers, all in support. Okay, and we have the Council of Autism Service Providers. Okay, all this support. Okay, any others wishing to testify? S C R one thirty-two, S R one fifty-two. Okay, sing non-members, any questions? Okay, sing non, let's move on to the next, S C R one eighty, S R one seventy-five. This is requesting Department, Department of Health to convene a working group uh to prepare and develop solutions and make recommendations for the recruitment and retention of nurses to address a shortage of the nursing and healthcare workforce in the state. Okay, up first, we have Department of Health. Thank you very much. We have Martha Randolph. Kupuna Caucus, Democratic Party for Hawaii. Support Healthcare Association of Hawaii.
Also, we're representing the Healthcare Association of Hawaii. We appreciate the intent of this resolution. We are very concerned about its very narrow focus. Um, we are engaged with a number of parties in, across the state to address um, the short-term and long-term workforce shortages. And we're very open to discussions about, about doing that, but again, we are very concerned about the very narrow focus of this particular resolution. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we have Queens Health System. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Hawaii State Center for Nursing.
Uh, good afternoon, this is Laura Reichardt, I'm the Director of the Hawaii State Center for Nursing, and we stand on our written comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have Hawaii Pacific Health. Okay, with comments. Okay, we also have, uh, Local Fifty, Hawaii Nurses Association with comments. Okay, Alison Kanishiro. Okay, in support. And Sharon Horst. Okay, also in support. Any others wish you to testify? S C R one eighty, S R one seventy-five. Okay, sing non-members, any questions? Okay, no questions? Okay, why don't we move on to the next pair of resolutions? S C R one eighty-three, S R one seventy-seven. Okay, up first, we have D H S. Okay, thank you very much. We have Pat McManaman.
Good afternoon, um, Chair and members of the committee. I'm with the Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights. We'd first like to respectfully suggest an amendment on the date to submit the report from, um, October thirty-first to December fifteenth. That will align then with the, um, House version of this bill. The second point I'd like to make is I'd like to disclose that, um, uh, I referenced in the resolution the amount of, um, state and city income tax from undocumented people. Um, on review, that number was incorrect. The number in the report reflects not only undocumented, but also Kopa residents. So I then turned to, um, the, uh, Institution of Taxation and Economic Policy out of Washington, D C, a very credible and reliable organization. The last report that they had, uh, reflecting, um, state and local income taxes uh, shows the income tax amount to be, um, um, less than the, um, reported amount, and it comes in.
Hi, Pat. Sorry, Pat, um, your minute is up, could, so could you please wrap it up, please?
So, I, I just want to reflect, um, that the amount is lower, it's thirty-two million, not the larger amount suggested, um, in the report. And I remain available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have Nicole Wu. Okay, Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks, okay, support. Okay, up next, we have Catherine Chen. And support, Ross and Calderon, and Thaddeus Pham. Okay, both in support. Okay, any others wishing to testify? S C R one eighty-three, S R one seventy-seven. Okay, sing non-members, any questions?
I do, Judy, for D H S.
Good afternoon.
So you said we could do this study, but you can't do it within the timeframe of October twenty twenty-two. Can you do it? When can you do it?
Uh, we could do it by the regular time that
Like December.
Like December, the December fifteenth day, or the twenty days before the start of the next session, we, we're able to complete that, what, what we're being asked to do here.
Before the next session?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any other questions? Okay, sing non, let's move on to the next set of resolutions, S C R one eighty-five, S R one sixty-nine. Urging the Executive Office on Aging to develop a standard training workshop for Kupuna caregivers regarding uh, technology items. Okay, up first, we have D B E T. Support Executive Office, uh, Office on Aging.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair and members of the committee, Caroline Taddy-Rao here with the Executive Office on Aging. And we're providing comments on S C R one eight-five, S R one six-nine, urging E O A to develop a standard training workshop for Kupuna and caregivers regarding purchasing different equipment. Uh, we do recognize that the pandemic really exasperated the digital divide that our elders are facing today. And we really appreciate the intent of this measure. I'd just like to highlight that I did have a conversation with the Broadband and Digital Equity Office under Bert Lum. And he's in strong support of taking the lead in this measure. E O A wants to continue to collaborate with the Broadband Office. And we feel E O A's position could be to help with the outreach and education component of this. So we just respectfully request an amendment to this S C R, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have the Hawaii Broadband Hui. Dan Smith.
Well, I, Chair and Committee Members, my name is Dan Smith, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Hawaii Broadband Hui. Uh, which is a voluntary group of, uh, almost a couple hundred people involved with broadband issues. So, we did submit, uh, written testimony similar to, uh, organization, asking for some amendments, because the key point is that already responsible organizations working in this area um, doing training and supplying devices. So we urge some language change to broaden it, to involve, uh, U H, D B E T, um, uh, D O E, uh, adult schools, uh, U H, community colleges, and, uh, nonprofits working in the area. I'd like to emphasize that there is going to be big money coming down for these activities. And standardizing the training and equipment will, will produce more success quicker, quickly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, up next, A A R P Hawaii. Okay, with comments.
Yes, good afternoon, Senator.
Audrey, hi.
Hi, Audrey Saganahagaw from A A R P, and we stand and appreciate the intent of this particular resolution. And just want to offer some comments, and basically, just to, um, share with the committee members that, um, A A R P has been involved in this effort, and we have produced several documents, which includes a roadmap for Kupuna, digital literacy for Kupuna. We also have produced a resource directory that maps out all the different organizations and services that are providing digital classes and resources for uh, connectivity as well as refurbished equipment. And just recently, we produced the Train the Trainer Framework. So this serves as a, a trainer's manual, and it captures the different curriculum that is um, that is considered best practice, both nationally as well as locally, and that we have offered this to our providers. And so, you know, just want to let you know that we already have efforts working collectively with everyone else in trying to um, expand the di- digital, uh, digital technology to our Kupuna. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I believe that so, excuse me, Alison Kanishiro. Written testimony support. Any others wish you to testify? S C R one eighty-five, S R one sixteen-nine. Is sing non-member's questions? Okay, Sarah Moriwaki.
Um, Caroline, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so you suggested amendments to this, um, reso, um, to put the Broadband Equity, uh, Digital Equity Office as the lead instead of, uh, E O A. But also, we had another organization adding in D O E, U H libraries. Uh, and, and Audrey with A A R P. Would the Digital Equity Office be able to do that? I know they do the, the, the broadband, you know, and, and training that they, they're getting funding for. But they would need somebody to coordinate that. So would E O A still be the coordinating body in collaboration with the Digital Equity Office and D O E, U H, uh, and the, um, A A R P?
We would definitely, uh, collaborate with all, I'm so sorry.
You've got the network, right? For, for, this is to serve the elderly, so, you know, I don't know the Digital Equity Office. And I, I, I'm so sorry, I didn't catch the gentleman's name with the Broadband Hui.
But as he said, a lot of these efforts, and like Audrey said, are already underway, so I know we're all willing to work together and collaborate, and Bert Lum had to go out of town, so he wasn't available to testify today. So he asked if I stand and support, um,
Because, if, if I, if I look at the, the result, it's to develop a standard training workshop for Kupuna and caregivers, and how to select the broadband connectivity, the audiovisual equipment, it's, it's really more buying the equipment, or, you know, in terms of that. But, but in terms of what, I don't know, um, but A A R P's handbook is, uh, and what I know that Bert's looking at broadband and, and helping, uh, different communities. But I think there needs to be some focus on, on what you're looking at in terms of of how you do these workshops and what's included in the workshops that E O A would know much better, I would think, what the what the needs of the elderly are, and then combine with Equity Office and U H D O E um, in terms of the resources they have. With that being.
Yeah, I, we can definitely, uh, support all of those efforts. Uh, just as far as the lead, though, I know, and speaking with Bert, he, he was fine with that, and we'll be right there, working with all the other entities that were mentioned to support that. We even helped, uh, we were on the work group with Audrey when the A A R P did their their digital, um, information and resources.
So, um, so we have a gentleman here, what, what's your name?
Oh, Dan Smith.
From.
Oh, well, I'm a member of the
Of the.
Of the Broadband Group.
Could you come to, come to?
Could you please?
Thank you for the question, and, and I think that, um, the Broadband Office would be an appropriate place. For example, right now, they have five hundred and seventy thousand dollars from, from federal government for Equity Planning Program, right? And they, I, I believe they're half hired or will hire some staff. Well, I know they have hired some staff, so they would be an appropriate, um, body, and members of the Hui are, include, uh, providers, people who are doing training now, including for. including for the elderly, and if I can drop, Rahava Suzas' name, one of the outstanding leaders in this field, and then the Waipahu adult school, so, so I think.
Sophie plopped in, and so the EOA, we plopped in the Digital Equity Office, be it resolved that the Digital Equity Office is urged to develop a training program for Kupuna, since Bert isn't here. And, and so it would, it would be the Digital Equity Office instead of the Executive Office on Aging.
I, I think that makes sense, and also standard, I mean, standardization of devices is important also because your, your teaching, you know, makes it easier to have a standard, a standard program. The challenge will be to get organized, because otherwise you're going to have trouble spending the money.
Okay, thank you.
Effectively, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you very much, and before we move on, I know we're heading towards the end of the agenda, but just want to remind members that we do have a two PM joint with another committee, so just, just FYI. Thank you. Up next, we have SCR two oh six.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah. Everyone, this is everybody, those watching on Zoom. SCR two oh six, SR one oh five, okay, requesting the Hawaii Tobacco Quit Line to make permanently visible on each page of its website, information pertaining to the availability of transmission services upon request. Okay, first we have Office of Language Access.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Akino and Member of the Committee, I'm the Executive Director for the Office of Language Access. We stand on our written testimony in support and offering comment because the rationale for comment is on the nature of the quit line that the caller expects to have, able to verbally communicate with the operator, that's why we submitted a recommendation to refrain from the appropriate services. Thank you, Chair, and we'll be available for any questions the committee may have, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Department of Health.
I'll speak as soon as I can. Good afternoon, Chair and Members, I'm Lola Urban, I'm the Assistant Director for the Department of Health. While the Department of Health supports this compact result, we've already started talking to the vendors that are through quit line websites. As Lola stated, we don't provide translation services, interpretation services, it's a lie, it seems like, lies. And we provide interpretation services in two hundred languages, as well as a limited sign language and phone type available. And so we have already started the conversation to work on dating and conspicuous translation of interpreter services available. So if you would like this topic, just let us know on this, if there's time, we are ready for you. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much, any others wishing to testify? Okay, SCR two oh six, SR one oh five, kissing on members' questions.
Just to clarify, so, so you're saying you don't need this reso because you're doing it, is that what you're saying in a nice way, or? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, okay, any other questions, members? Seeing none, let's move on to the last, SCR two seventeen, SR one fifty five. Urging Department of Health to take certain actions regarding fugitive dos. We don't have any written testimony. Okay, okay, so position is in support. Very good, is that for all resolutions? Okay, just kidding, any others wishing to testify, seeing none, members' questions? Yeah, seeing none, we're going to recess for decision making. A reconvening our one oh two PM agenda for decision making on a number of resolutions, concurrent resolutions as well as SRs. Okay, up first, we have SCR one twelve, SR one eighteen. This is requesting the Hawaii State Center for Nursing to convene a working group to study the feasibility and impact of a nurse licensure compact. Members, the recommendation is to move this as is. Any questions or concerns, seeing none, Senator.
Vice Chair Akino.
Hi.
Chair, Senator. Excuse, Mauro Waki, hi, Senator Shimabuku.
Hi.
Senator. Chair, your recommendations adopted for SR one one two, SR one eighteen.
Yes, SCR one twelve and SR one eighteen, yes, thank you very much, members. Moving on to SCR sixty seven, SR sixty. This would request the Governor's Coordinator on Homelessness to conduct a study. Members, we're going to be deferring these resolutions. Okay, up next, SCR sixty nine, SR sixty two. This would request Department of Health to establish a certain council to evaluate and to recommend and to review certain upcoming health treatments. We're going to defer this, these resolutions, mainly in deference to the House bill that we recently moved, House Bill fifteen forty, I believe, so deferring those to. Okay, SCR eighty eight, SR seventy nine, requesting the Office of Wellness and Resilience to establish the Malama Ohana Working Group. Okay, members, like to recommend to move this as is. Any questions or concerns, members, yes? No, no, thank you, okay? As is.
Okay, as is. Chair, Senator, excuse, all other members here, anyone voting with reservation? With, for no, okay, recommendations.
Okay, thank you very much, SCR one nineteen. This request both the Department of Health and Department of Human Services to look at a number of things. Members, like to defer this resolution as well. Okay, moving on to SCR one thirty two, SR one fifty two. Requesting DHS, MedQuest, to take necessary steps to ensure that adequate provider leads are established for certain services, members, the recommendation is to move this as is. Any questions or concerns, members? Yes, Senate Concurrent Resolution one thirty two, SR one fifty two, as is. It passes.
Recommendation on SCR one thirty two, it's passed unamended. Senator, Senator, excuse, all other members here, anyone voting with reservation, anyone voting no? Chair, your recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much, on to SCR one eighty, SR one seventy five. This would request Department of Health to work with a, to convene a certain working group to address some of our nursing and healthcare issues here in the state. Members, the recommendation is to defer. Moving on to SCR one eighty three, SR one seventy seven. This would request DHS to study certain health insurance coverage for mainly pregnant individuals as well as children, regardless of their immigration status. Members, the recommendation is to move this as a Senate draft one. Okay, we're just going to be changing the, the report date as requested by DHS. We're gonna move the report date to twenty days before the twenty fourth session. Any questions or concerns, members? Is seeing none, Senator Mauro Waki.
SCR one eighty three, to pass with amendments, Senator, Sheriff San Juan Ventura, excuse all others, anyone voting with reservation?
No. No.
No vote, no vote, Senator Alma. Anyone else voting no with reservation? Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, members, on to SCR one eighty five, SR one sixty nine. Urging Executive Office on Aging to develop a standard training workshop for Kupuna and caregivers, mainly on the technological front and broadband front. Members, the recommendation is to move this as a Senate draft one. We're gonna allow the Executive Office on Aging to continue to spearhead these efforts, but to work in concert with the State Broadband Director, AARP, as, as well as the broadband HUI, to assist with the requests that are highlighted in these resolutions. Any questions or concerns, members? Seeing none, Senator Mauro Waki.
Members with San Juan Ventura, excuse, all others, anyone voting with reservation? No? All voting aye, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, moving on to SCR two oh six, SR one oh five. This is requesting the Hawaii Tobacco Quit Line to permanently make visible on each page of its website pertaining to transmission services, you know, after listening to some of the concerns or some of the testifiers, we're going to be deferring these resolutions since there's already actions at this time. So again, defer these to this paravals, okay? And on to the last, SCR two seventeen, SR one fifty five. This would urge Department of Health to take certain actions regarding fugitive dos. So, members, the recommendation is to move this as is. Okay, any questions or concerns, members, seeing none, Senator Mauro Waki.
Senator San Juan Ventura, excuse, all other members, anyone voting with reservation, anyone voting no? Senator Alma, anyone else? Chair, your recommendations.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, we're adjourned. Okay, take two, okay, it's Friday, March twenty fourth, we're in Conference Room two two five for two PM agenda. Your committees, our committees on Health and Human Services as well, as well as Public Safety and Intergovernmental and Military Affairs, meeting for a number of resolutions. Okay, up first, oh, excuse me, I'm supposed to read a script? Do I need to? I don't. So since the Chair on Government Operations does not, I'll follow his lead. Okay, up first, we have SCR sixty four, requesting the Department of Health's Solid Waste Section to develop a plan of initiatives for improve the waste diversion by working with the counties to address each county's unique needs according to its geography, population, and industry makeup. First, we have Department of Health.
Good afternoon, Chair Wakai, Vice Chair Afonte, and Vice Chair Akino, my name is Michael Burke, Hawaii State Department of Health. DOH submitted written comments on this bill, we stand on our written comments, I'm available for questions if you have any, thank you.
Thank you very much, okay, up next, we have Makana Paris, Worker Stabilization Fund.
Well, Vice Chair Akino, Chair Glenn Wakai, Vice Chair Randall Afonte, and members of the committees. Makana Paris, on behalf of T. George Paris of the Highway Hawaii Worker Stabilization Fund. This resolution is a chance to actually make the phrase, no one wants a landfill in their backyard true. Each county right now has the kuliana to take care of their own opala. But what we're asking is for the state to consider helping them figure out how to work together in the spirit of cooperation, figure out how they can better divert waste to landfills. This legislative body in twenty twenty created the half mile buffer zone, making environmental justice a priority for our communities. But let us not forget those people that currently live next to landfills, less than a feet away in Mauna Kuli, Oahu, next to PBT landfill taking forty percent of the opala of this island from nineteen eighty five to today.
Sorry, Makana, your one minute is, and I do apologize, there is a one minute testimony limit here.
May I make the recommended reading in for the changes to come for me, Chair?
I believe we received written copies, so, thank you very much.
Available questions?
Okay, thank you, okay, up next, we have Joseph O'Donnell. Okay, in support, George Soffel. Okay, in opposition, any others wishing to testify, yes, oh, Angela?
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and the committees, Angela Melody, I'm testifying on behalf of CARES. So the purpose of this resolution is to integrate the work of counties within one administrative umbrella and to examine a coordinated statewide effort. The DO, the DOH is required to conduct this study and to provide a report. So by looking at the city's Department of Environmental Services refused to vision Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan, we can get a, a comprehensive review, we can get a comprehensive review about the Honolulu Counties' management plan. However, it should be for consideration of the state legislature to include the work of the nonprofit and business sectors as well as the other counties. For example, the organizations like Four Oceans Parley, Certifieder Bottles for College Sustainable Coastlines have impactful work in the communities, and their data should be considered because then the state can access those resources. And these brands have, are organizations about environmental protection, sustainability, and marine conservation.
Wrap it up, your one minute is up.
Okay, and in closing, it is good for consideration for the state legislature to consider working with these non-traditional waste diversion organizations, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, any others wishing to testify, SCR sixty four, kissing on members' questions? We're going to move on to SCR eighty nine. On our testifiers list, we have Tommy Johnson, where he's representative from Department of Public Safety.
Member. Hi, Chair, Vice Chairs, I'm David, I'm talking about the, I'm the administrator for the Department of Public Safety, hanging in for Tommy Johnson, Director. We stand on our written testimony.
Thanks very much, anyone from the Department of Health, Behavioral Health Administration?
Yes, I'm Michael Chan, here on the medical director, developing work for the Department of Health. We stand on our written testimony.
That's all I have for those indicating they'd like to testify, is there anyone else, Angela, that would like to testify?
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and the committees, Angela Melody Young testifying in strong support on behalf of CARES. Mental health is a very necessary thing to provide, especially for correctional centers. And then I'm going to point to an example, for example, STAR, it's a pilot program from Denver, Colorado, and it is a, implemented through the Office of Behavioral Health Strategies to provide for the mental health needs of the, of Denver, and then also to ensure the city's mental health needs were being addressed in an innovative and efficient manner. So their goal was to connect the key players in the city's efforts towards greater mental health well-being and organize the efforts to strategize about transformative solutions. And what was the result was a better support system for the city's mental health needs, which reduced the strain on critical city resources, removed barriers to access, advocated for change in the system, addressed inadequacies of the system while strengthening the network of mental health resources. So, it turns up, I just in closing that, because from the example, we can see that that was a good initiative to invest in mental health, this should also be replicated for the correctional centers. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for the insights, is there anyone else wishing to testify on SCR eighty nine? Members, any questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next two. Okay, we're going to move on to the next two measures, SCR 107, SR 96. On our testifiers list, we have Darsha Lee, an individual has submitted testimony and support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on 107 and 96? SR 96, essential.
Aloha, Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES. So CORE is a transformative solution to the homeless concern. It provides care and support instead of approaching homelessness with law enforcement. The people, you know, they need medical support and care. And there's been a lot of efforts to address homelessness, but not many of them to focus on the medical roots of homelessness. As HUD defines chronically homelessness, it is an unsheltered person with a disabling medical condition. Okay, it's a medical root. And that is why CORE is essential to providing support for the homeless people. Now, the point in count times may not be as effective if you don't know the data about what kind of medical conditions that these people are dealing with. So it's going to require a collaboration of the state and the city because the state has a comprehensive health departments to access health knowledge. But the state needs to direct the city because the city does not have these health departments. The city can only provide the core support. So in closing, we are in strong support. This subject matter is very necessary to legislate.
Thank you for your commentary. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Resolutions 107 and 96? Any members have questions? We're going to move on to the last two measures on this agenda. They are Senate Concurrent Resolution 226 as well as Senate Resolution 164. Members, we've gotten written comments in support from Kathy Betts, Gerald Silva, and excuse me, Gerald Silva is actually both. And Derek Carlin is in support. I don't want to mischaracterize Mr. Silva's insightful commentary. Anyone else wishing to testify on SCR 226 and SR 164? Members, no one to ask questions of, so we will break briefly before taking the vote on these measures. Reconvening our joint agenda. First, we have SCR 64. Members, the recommendation is to move this as a Senate draft one. There's a number of amendments that were requested that we're allowing into the SD1. I will just go ahead and read it just so that everyone understands. Page two, line one and three, we're going to delete this whereas clause. Also on page two, line six, we're going to delete promising, the term promising. Okay, page three, line two, insert, "Subject to availability of funding after the word section." Okay, page three, line two, delete the, "Develop a plan of initiatives and change to investigate strategies." In members, also on page three, line eight, insert, "Subject to availability of funding after the word section." And lastly, page three, line 29, delete, "Including any proposed legislation." Okay. Members, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Senator Milwaukee.
Okay. Yes. All right, okay. Chair San Juan Tura is excused. Senator Akino.
Aye.
Senator Milwaukee?
Aye.
Senator Makuro?
Aye.
Senator Awaki?
Aye.
Adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. For members of PSM, same recommendation to pass this measure with the amendment suggested by the Chair, Vice Chair of the Committee on Health and Human Services. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes. Chair Volzai, Vice Chair Volzai, Senator Fukunaga, excuse, Senator McKelby.
Yes.
Senator Awak.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted. Thank you. On the next measure, Senate Concurrent Resolution 89, the Chairs have conferred. We like this resolution. We'd like to pass it out as is. Any discussion? Not Senator Elefante, I vote yes. Okay, of the four members present from PSM, any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Health and Human Services, same recommendation.
Okay, questions, concerns, seeing none.
Of the four members present, any nays or reservations? Seeing none, members adopted.
Thank you. On the next two resolutions, SCR 107 and SR 96, again, the two Chairs have conferred, and we find this, these resolutions as perfect as they are. So we'd like to pass them out, pass them both out as they are. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, vote yes. Okay, of the four members present, any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted. Okay, HHS Committee, any questions, concerns, seeing none.
Okay, of the four members present, any nays or reservations? Hearing none, members adopted.
Thank you. On the last set of resolutions, SCR 226 and SR 164, the Chairs have conferred. We really like this resolution, but need to make some technical non-substantive amendments for clarity and consistency. Any discussion on that recommendation? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes. Okay, of the four members present from PSM, any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted. Okay, HHS Committee, same recommendations.
Okay, of the four members present, any nays or reservations? Hearing none, members adopted.
Thank you very much. Your turn.